So, welcome to the Planning and Infrastructure Committee on the 5th of April. To all councillors and to people watching by. Apologies have been received from councillor Prittenden and councillor Hutsley, councillors Linda and Stuart Piper. Okay, are there any declarations of interest from anyone?
Just to say, Chair, councillor Piper was out, so we'll counsel last week. Maybe come back to haunt him. If it's Covid, can do.
There's still a lot of it about. The minutes of the last meeting. Can we agree those?
I propose the next chair.
Seconded by either Nixie or Heatherington, whoever. Then this consultation site. Sorry? For those in favour, I always forget that. This consultation site access, I have no idea what that is.
Chair, this relates actually to the first planning application. Unusually, the town court received an email asking for an informal consultation on the access and exit from the development. Are you able to put that on the screen for me, Dean? It actually relates to Phase Three, land east and west of Hain Road. And they're asking us to informally on where they want to force exit from the development, turning left as opposed to turning right onto the carriageway. So, Dean can show you where that is.
Are there any comments from Highways about that?
We have no information on it at all, just this email and the plan. So if you wish to make a comment on that, that's okay. And I'll go back to the development.
Councillor Orban.
It just makes perfect sense to me. Because otherwise you'd be stopping a lot of traffic going across here very, you know, normally full, and I just think that's just makes sense.
So they're turning left rather than right? But if they want to go right, they have to go round the block, do you think?
Come down and round and round and back and go back.
There is a bit of junction on the other side, and then you could go the one way out. Is it out along the Luton Road?
I think it just makes sense.
Yes, St John's Road.
Yeah.
That goes the other way.
No comment? No comment, thank you.
Is it costing us?
No, I can't see the chip well.
Or will it be costing us in social housing now?
That's a TDC issue, isn't it?
Yes, but we can always think about it, can't we? Because it's with air.
I'd like to comment about the whole development actually, but don't get me started then. That is your next up, you're back for our next item. So I'll go back to the person who makes it.
Thank you. So, planning applications. So this is the first one. So, councillor Wing. I put this off.
Well, I just really struggle with the whole of this development off farmland, I have to say. Following reading TDC's own document that they published in 2020, that they commissioned somebody in 2021, where our population growth up to 2040 is just going to be 10%, mainly driven by the over 65s. So it's actually bungalows and care homes we should be building. I just, I just, I just don't get why we're not challenging the numbers. I get a bit confused. I also think that the, it was S16 that was brought up on the last development, where development should be, should be considered together. I'd like to know what the, what the local plan figures for, for the numbers for this area are. Because I just think they're being exceeded. I mean, this land was previously designated as business and commercial land, and then got changed to residential. And there is, I'd like to know who the applicant is. I think the applicant is something POL. I think there's some link back to TDC in Casey's, but I've yet to find that out. I just, there's so many houses being built there, I just don't, I don't understand why. That's, it's not a planned objection, I don't think, but, you know, six months ago I was driving down that land and I was surrounded by farmland. And now I'm not surrounded by farmland. And nobody's justified the numbers. But they keep quoting this mythical equation that the Tory, the Tory government have said designates our numbers, but nobody's ever shown me that. Nobody's ever sat me down and said, this is why we have 17,100 houses because of A, B and C, with a possible additional four. I mean, those 17,100 houses represents 25% increase in our housing numbers, without a 25% increase in GP surgeries, infrastructure schools. I'm just having a rant.
With the black path.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, all right, just, it is that part of this is Highways Infrastructure Works, primary school, small bridge, our unit, community hall, public home spaces, et cetera, et cetera. Within this outline application, that's not a full application, it's an outline application. And as the land was quite rightly said, was previously to be.
Commercial.
Commercial.
Business, yeah.
So it's obviously been put forward under the local plan. I'm not, I don't know.
Designation has changed.
Is it designated? And by all means, you can, you can contact the chief executive of Tannet District Council and ask him, can you please show us where this, the amount of houses that we're saying is required by the local plan, that's been laid down by, by government? By all means, ask him that.
I'd also like to know more about the applicant.
I thought they'd backtrack on their numbers, the central government, but probably too late for.
Was too late if you see the local plan, yes.
Yeah, for developments like this, where presumably the land has been acquired and money has been spent. Sorry, councillor Nixie.
I think the, the thing that, that we find, don't we, is people don't really know land has been allocated for houses until they start seeing the building.
Yes.
So at the moment, you're getting a lot of people moaning about the building. I know Leningham School, et cetera, et cetera, and other places are up in arms over certain, not that I'm saying they're up in arms, but people, you know, are rightly anxious about what's going on because they're finally seeing it. Whereas we get the opportunity, as councillor Wing's, you know, pointed out, to see it previously. So if we don't bring up concern now, then by the time it happens, it's too late. I think, I mean, I'd go along with her concerns. Because if we don't start to, well, stop the rot effectively, or start looking at it early enough, then everything just gets built over. Because this isn't stuff that's going on now, that everybody's like, oh my God, I can't believe that's, you know, we're losing that farmland. This is extra stuff. So I would, as Ramsgate Town councillor, I would want to turn around and say, right, I'd like the justification for like, why this is needed. Couldn't we almost like build what we're building and see, and see what we need afterwards? I don't know how you do that, but it just seems that we do need to do something now. Because this is above and beyond what's already going on. And what's already going on is frightening people.
Could I just say, when you say it's extra, is it above our 17,000? Oh, yes, 17,000. Sorry, I was going to come to you, David.
But regardless of that, it doesn't mean to say that we can't question it. Because that's just a number that we've been given and it's like, what, do we just sit back and say, oh, that's our farmland, then we've been told by the government that we have to do this, and therefore it's all going. We could at least question it, can't we?
Well, they were saying that that's what it's important to.
To do.
Yes, I saw.
Councillor Green, please.
Well, first of all, this is an amended application. Doesn't really change, nothing changes in terms of numbers. You're right, the numbers are laid down by the government. And the time to challenge, to challenge that, if you wanted to challenge it, wasn't the local plan, and some of us did.
It is, yes.
That's, that's settled. And, and to me, putting them up along the New Hain Road is probably a good place as, as any in Tannet. Given that we haven't got brownfield sites to use, unless we used some of the apple. But where I criticize TDC is there's no master plan.
Yes, I think that's where.
The development along the New Hain Road to be pieced. Given the numbers, they could have produced a master plan the developers had to fit in with.
Yes.
That, that would have specified the amount of resources that had to go along with the housing. And they didn't do it. Now, it was done, that was done a long time ago.
Yeah.
I can't even remember who was in charge of TDC at the time. Probably UKG. But that, that wasn't done, and we're paying for it now. But it's too late now. This is just an amended application.
Because the application has gone through already, or the outline has already been approved. Sorry, councillor.
Councillor. Councillor. Yes, the reason I called it in really was to the, the point that councillor Green made there about the sort of piecemeal approach, that it seems to be extraordinarily bitty. We've got a bit here, we've got a bit there, we've got a bit there. And yes, okay, so we have got, the thing has gone through already. But I think councillor Nixie's point is a good one, that we should be commenting anyway to express our concerns. My concerns are about these developments all being in places where nobody can get a bus, nobody can use any other form of transport, et cetera, et cetera. We have declared a climate emergency. None of this is consonant with that. None of this is consonant with good quality of life for residents in many of these areas. We should be commenting on that, even though we know it's not going to change anything. I think we should be making the point that as Ramsgate Town Council, we're concerned about this.
But they were, any of these outline developments will have the same problems. I'm not saying that makes.
And we should say, say it about all of them if we're invited to go. I mean, this isn't actually in Ramsgate, this is just on our borders, it's in Moncton. Matt Munson, I should say. But I think we should comment on all of them in the same vein.
Councillor Heatherington.
Well, it's just, I mean, looking through this, these are all executive homes. They've got that appearance in there. I mean, are there any provision for, you know, affordable housing? Well, this is the other, I mean, you know, this is the thing we constantly hear from our residents, that the lack of housing and the difficulties with private land, exactly. And the difficulties on getting public, you know, set, housing through the council is like, the waiting list, no, are very lengthy. And the same goes for most housing associations. And this is definitely, this is at the, this is at the upper end of the market.
And do we know whether they've wriggled out of their.
I don't know, I don't see anything.
Sorry, councillor.
Just to say that, you know, it's, it's not normal for a section of my six agreement to be, they'll be doing the outline application stage. So once they come in with, with full application, that's when any, the negotiations will take place as to the affordable housing, the 30% affordable housing, et cetera, et cetera, which is all we can ask for, the majority or the maximum. I'd, I'd just like to, just to take up a point in relation. I, I am sure our council planning officers, not only the planning officers, but also our local plan officers would say that the local plan is the strategy for building. Now, it doesn't stop anybody else coming in that's not part of that local plan to build something somewhere. They don't stop anything like that. But I'm, I'm only assuming that this is within the part of the local plan and designated for housing. And if wishes that the case, and don't forget, these applications do come in piecemeal. They don't, they're not all going to come in in one go, so you can see where everything is. They're, they're not going to do that, are they? And I tell you, you know, you've got to take each application on its, on its merit and not on what it should be with something else. Oh, it don't look right here because we haven't got this somewhere next to it or something. You've got, that's, that's the law in relation to it. You know, and I, and I think until government changes the law, planning, application laws, and I don't disagree with, with you, Tricia, saying about we should have, you know, there should be like. An overarching master plan, if you like. But at the same.
Transport plan. And, and yes, we all know that the government, you know, the government's policy on this is not one that we agree with, but we have to keep saying it.
Until the government changes, the government changes the law, then we're fighting a losing battle, mate.
To your view, we have to keep saying it every time.
I agree. If we say nothing, then, then people assume it's okay. We need to keep making.
Make a proposal then that we can vote on.
That we have concerns about the numbers and types of housing that are being built. We have concerns that.
Lack of public transport.
Lack of infrastructure, so public transport. There's no indication of any, any information concerning southern water. I mean, that was previously a whole, a whole area of land that was porous, and it's now covered mainly in houses and tarmac. And we have been encouraged to, to do that by the present leader of the council, to ask questions at planning, which is what I intend to do and I have done. Where is the, where is the.
Stick to the proposal, Becky.
We have concerns about the numbers and types of housing that are being built there and the lack of infrastructure, particularly.
Public transport.
On farmland, yes. Connectivity. And also, there doesn't appear to be any information around water infrastructure.
Councillor Orban.
Just to, just to say that, you know, the developer cannot control public transport. You know, it's not in their, it's not in their gift. Do so, they can't if do so, that's, that's for. It's for, but for somebody else to ensure that, that, you know, when these houses get done, I mean, we have trouble half the time with a loop going around, let alone, let alone out there.
These out of town sites, sorry.
It doesn't appear to say anything about John Pallow's land, where his son or whoever wanted to build some houses. And they eventually blocked him by not doing the road.
The blocks is the restless house, I was at that.
So what's happened to that?
That's not part of the application.
Not relevant, Pat.
I can explain that.
Does he have a doubt?
His application was.
Councillor Wing.
Because of the access onto the road. So he can't proceed with his development, which I voted along with you. I felt that was totally unfair until Phase One, Two and Three are built and the relief road is put in. And it was totally unfair that.
Okay, do we have a second for your motion, councillor Austin? And can we vote, all those in favour of?
What is the, what is, what are we voting for, Chair?
The most, which is, we don't like the.
I've expressed concerns. Ramsgate Town Council raises concerns of, of the numbers and types of properties being built, that there's no information with reference to water infrastructure. And concerns are raised due to lack of public transport in the area.
Right, so it's been.
Our tweaks.
Proposed and seconded, all those in favour? All those against? Any abstentions? I'm going to abstain, actually. Yeah, three abstentions.
Three, which was.
Me and councillor Green. It is a horrible, horrible problem.
They're advertising nationally, Regrow, and this development's being advertised nationally.
Anyway.
This is 35 chapel plays, change of years, change of years of conversion to seven self contained flats. Comprised of three, three one bed flats and four two bed flats. Together with the extension of a single story rear extension, a second floor rear extension with formation of external stairs. Two rear courtyard and installation of access gates in south west boundary wall, together with internal alterations to facilitate the change of use and restore and renovate the external elevations, including repainting windows and doors and partial restoration and repainting of plaster to front elevation. That's your listed building consent as well as.
They're doing a great job on the outside, and it's really nice to see.
They've already done the outside very well.
However.
The layout.
Yes, the reason I called it in was I thought there's far too much going on in there and some of the, some aspects of the layout are really worrying.
Claster area so tight.
Something that filled that years ago then. Not that it particularly matters, but, sorry, councillor Moore.
For building.
It's, it, it looks nice, I think it looks nice. But the access to the back is very narrow. I've taken my car down there once.
Is it still there?
Terrible. Yeah, it probably is.
You know, and how can they get around the difficulties that exist? No, there are a few houses along there, so the rubbish is not.
Chair, would you like Dean to tell you about where?
Yeah, that would be great, thank you, Dean.
We can't get a rubbish done down.
No, they use smaller ones.
I think they could get them to vend down.
Same on the other side as the extension on the back as well. And then you've got the internal use that's existing. It's a single story extension, please, Dean, sorry.
Like you were just going to say. Because of overlooking the more ridiculous things.
So that, I believe, is an extension of the bathroom.
Ah, okay. It's a small, tiny room. Yeah, okay, tiny, okay.
The rooms are very, the bedrooms are very small.
Yeah, 10 metres square.
Which is on the cusp of being illegal.
Does that mean they're not then, Chair?
They're not, yeah.
Okay. They are already not.
True. So, so can we practice it again, Chair?
Have three one bed and four two bed.
I mean, I personally think it's overdeveloped. But could you enlarge them a bit, please? I have looked at them online. So we can see what the rooms are. Bedroom, 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 bedroom.
I believe the two bed flats are actually at the top of the building.
Please, rubbish store. Into the rubbish, rubbish store.
And obviously.
Is there access for all to be able to get to the flats at the top there?
So if it's on Thompson's Passage, are they taking a bit of Thompson's Passage? Or? Overdevelopment. They've done a good job on the outside of the building. Yeah, that's done.
It's the very weird shapes there too on that. That, that, that on the left is.
It's a beautiful building.
Yes, they're horrible, aren't they, the way they make you?
That extension on the back, I find, I find anything now, given my first, first one application was rejected for overlooking, and I'm only two stories high. Thirty seven windows overlook me, so I find it quite ridiculous that we would approve something that high in a similar area to where my building was.
I'm not sure what it would overlook though.
I'm two stories high, I don't overlook anything.
I mean, the immediately behind on the corner is, remember there was a big gate with Pew and On on it?
Yes, the cottage, it's a cottage.
Yeah, which is a very big cottage. Yeah, so that's what's immediately behind there.
There's two cottages there. And there's some cottages on the, on the other side of Thompson's that it would overlook.
Councillor Green.
In my opinion, overall, it's an improvement.
To being.
With regard to what was there before. And if, and there doesn't seem to be any confirmation, any, any legal. I would vote for approval.
Okay, and councillor Nixie?
Oh no, I was just pointing to.
Oh, okay.
Right. I personally think it's overdevelopment.
Yeah, I think it's overdevelopment. I would like to base, I would like to say that we like the, what they've done to the outside. I'm very concerned that it, yes, I would like to propose that we say that we like what they've done to the outside of the building. It's great to see the building coming back into use, but we think, we are concerned that it's overdeveloped and far too crowded.
Yeah, if the, you know, from our point of view, if, if the room sizes are legal and are adequate and comply with guide, conversion guidelines, then it's not overdeveloped. Councillor.
Okay, so we've got one saying it's overdeveloped. Have we a second for that? Councillor Green, all those in favour of overdevelopment motion? Right, all those against? I'll go against, I think.
At four.
Are you abstaining?
No.
Was there?
I thought you were still counting them.
Chair, I propose.
Could we have a recorded vote, please? So could we have it noted that the councillors that did state it was over? I think it's S17, a recorded vote, isn't it? As long as the committee votes for a recorded vote, I can record a vote. But you need a second for this, this proposal.
I will second it.
Okay, so now we take the vote.
Okay.
Oh, yes, all those in favour, will be me.
Will you record his vote?
A favour of, what are we voting for? No, you need to. No. You want me to record the vote, so you can take the vote. Carry on, carry on.
All those in favour of councillor Orban's no comment motion? Do you want the names down? Makingston, councillor Orban, councillor Orban. Okay, thank you.
Chair, I think you're supposed to take the vote on whether to record it.
Yes, very true.
Thank you for that. Right, okay. Can we have a vote on whether, just step back, on whether it should be a recorded vote? All those in favour? Five, okay. All those against?
Four.
Four? So we've got a recorded vote, so we'll go back to the recorded vote of that we have no comment on this. All those in.
I currently have in favour of no comment. No, you don't have to repeat. Um, councillor Orban, councillor Makingston, councillor Overdon, councillor Green and councillor Moore voted for the motion, no comment. Any, against.
Yes, sorry, against, right.
So that's four.
Any abstentions?
No, yes, that's carried.
That's carried.
That's carried, that will be recorded in a minute.
Thank you. So, Trade Station, 27 Harbour Street? It appears to be of, what's it, an art gallery at the moment?
I, I think you can just remove this one because I was, I was a bit worried.
No, it's a restaurant now, in the art station.
Is this not the trade station where the art gallery is? 27 Harbour Street.
Twenty-seven Harbour Street, uh, the, um, variation of condition two is simply to allow alterations to the fenestration and dual-lit balconies on the side elevation, which is retrospective, as they're already there. Um, Dean can show you where they are.
So this is the original building, and then they, uh, Juliet balcony with retro, that's the only change.
Thank you, councillor. But it is now, the proposal is that it's a restaurant. I don't know whether they need planning permission for that.
It's change of use, isn't it? Are we on Trade Station twenty-seven Harbour Street?
We are, but was it not a, was it never a restaurant before? That's what I'm wondering about.
No.
No.
Members of plans have been approved. This is purely for the fenestration and Juliet balconies retrospectively.
There's no comment.
No comment.
But it's not- I haven't qualified, no, Chair.
Yes, all those in favour of record.
I'll just show you, I'm sorry, I'll- Help myself, sorry.
Just calm myself.
Okay, all those in favour of no comment on this?
Okay.
You need a second.
Can you tell me who's second?
And Maru Nixie is, councillor Nixie is seconding.
No, I proposed it. You need a second.
Oh, I thought my straw council.
Didn't I?
No, I proposed it, Chair. You need a second.
I will second it. All those in favour, which is everybody?
Chair.
Okay, now, the Royal. Which is interesting.
So this is the Royal Fifty-One Harbour Parade, it's in conservation area.
Which has been altered very slightly.
Very slightly.
The one before.
I've called the interdiction planning again.
Sorry, councillor Green.
They're proposing-
Hang on, councillor Green.
They're proposing to reduce the roof, aren't they?
Yes, but not much.
Where are they gaining the?
Yeah.
Is the space, where is the loss of space to enable them to reduce the roof coming from?
So they originally had a nesting roof mount for the top, the top, um, flat.
Right.
And they're removing that completely, so that was the original plan, they're bringing it down.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, it is. Red dotted line was the, yeah.
I don't know what, I don't know how to be smart.
But if we get those plans, unless I'm reading the plans totally wrong, they've got bedrooms without windows. Are they allowed to do that?
I mean, Chair, if that's the only change, then I don't think, I think our previous comments-
Still sound. And, but I'd just like to have a look at the, proper look at the floor plans.
For our, for our windows here, uh-
No, but the, there are other internal ones. Sorry, I can't see from here.
Uh, for the bedrooms, there are, uh, there are windows into the bedrooms, but the bathroom, yeah, there's no guide.
No, no, the bathroom's not a problem. What about the next, oh, that's the fourth floor and the third floor. What about the second floor?
Uh, there are no plans for the, it's just showing the-
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it's on board.
Well, I'm imagining what I saw this morning, when I looked at it.
Tricia, now, can-
Oh, well, there you go.
Councillor Green.
Yeah.
Sorry, councillor Green.
Chair, could I propose that we repeat our previous comments with the observation that just reducing the roof, the roof height does not affect-
And its design, from my interject.
Right, the proposal is that we don't, that we stick by our original comments.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the observation that just reducing the roof height does not materially affect our comments.
Yes.
Yeah.
Seconded.
Yeah, we'll all second.
That's, um, all in favour? Anyone again? Or, there was some quite strong, um, objections to it on the website, including from the, uh, is it the harbour bar behind, who reckon they're encroaching, not that that's our business, actually, on their land. Um, okay. So the Granville Theatre.
Shall I say it again?
Yeah. Right, councillor Orban.
Yeah, Chair, I was just before that end, because I, I thought it was just an ideal thing for all, all of us at, uh, I'd be seeing to have a look at, bearing, bearing in mind, uh, difficulty that would, that's taken to get to this point. Um, and I just thought it was good to have a look personally, I'm totally in favour of it, and, uh, wish them all, all the best of luck.
There are objections, I think, from the People of South.
The design forum don't seem keen either, do they?
Hmm.
I'm not keen on mine either.
About the viewing interrupted?
Well, Chair, sorry, I would just say that the, the RH, uh, RHDF, uh, Heritage Design Forum is highly supportive of this project.
Yeah, but the criticism of, of the design?
Yeah, we've, we've had strong criticism of this design.
Yeah, so we could, well, I mean, we could all say that, we all want to see it brought back into you.
Yes.
It's just a question of how.
Yeah, but I, I personally, I think it's quite good, but that's just my opinion.
Well, we can't see much from that.
Have we got elevations?
It's sort of upper floor.
So.
There's toilets on the roof.
The glass floor is, uh-
Sorry, Dean, sorry, Dean.
Hold up, that's bad.
The glass, um, so they're putting lots of place there in the front. For, like, the ground through and then, uh, like, an exposed extension at the back. So you've got the front on the right, the back to the left, so they're, they're coming out. So they are going up one at the back.
Right. The back being the bit that faces the road is distinct from the bit that faces the sea, yeah?
Yeah. So, you've got-
So are they increasing the height of the building in some intersection of it?
In, in a section, yeah.
So that's why people that cross the road are objecting, yeah?
Yes.
So you've got the existing layout of, uh, the ground floor, and then you've got the proposed, uh, there's not, not too much change.
No.
I mean, they're keeping the ramp in there, uh, you want some toilets at the back.
Oh, they're putting small toilets up above, aren't they?
Yeah, so then you've got stage level, uh, that's existing, and then that's proposed to the green. Where the cinema was there, they're coming straight through to make that one theatre. And then you've got the fly tower, which is the, the extension at the back, which they're making roof to access, and there's toilets, like, up on that, that'll be on the roof.
Do they have any disabled access to the toilets, or is there an alternative disabled toilet?
I can't tell, I can't see any.
No.
I believe that's something councillor Orban mentioned last week about potential funding, but that's, yeah, collection.
Councillor Heatherington.
Well, I mean, obviously, because we, you know, we wish this well, but I mean, it's business of not using the roof. Um, which is the Sands didn't either. I mean, I've had friends down from London, and, you know, in London, roofs are used, we could have had beautiful gardens on top of the Sands Development.
Exactly, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Well, um, uh, you know, it's a beautiful space, it's got huge potential, and it seems a bit of a waste, but, um, that's not really an objection, it's just an observation.
Councillor Wing.
Could I just, because we were washing the shelter right next to that.
Hmm.
And there was, there's some Harris fencing which goes towards the shelter.
Yeah.
So the extension at the back has taken then beyond their present footprint, or is it?
No, it's just going straight up.
Okay, so that back bit will be higher?
So, yeah, so, just the back of the building. So, yeah, so it's, it's actually going straight up.
Yeah.
The boundaries to the red line, so it's not going.
Chair. Chair.
Councillor Green.
Sorry, councillor.
I don't think we can, uh, ask them to do something with the roof if they don't want to do it.
No, no.
Um, current guidance for the conservation area is not to use PVC windows.
Yeah.
Uh, and until TDC changes that recommendation, I think we need to point out to them that they-
What are they proposing?
Be using PVC.
What, what material are they proposing?
What they're proposing.
PVC, right, yes, councillor Wing.
Well, we recently had, do you, do you remember that one that they were told to put the, the new building, Margate?
Hmm.
That we turned over, didn't we? Because TDC told this new build, which was just outside the conservation zone, um, um, it's a story, but I'm coming to the point. And he wanted heritage UPVC, and TDC had told him, put your wooden ones in, and then replace them under per, permitted development rights. And that can happen within a conservation area, because it's actually happened on Spencer Street. I moaned about window, UPVC window going in there, and it can be done under permit, general permitted development rights. So I think if they're using UPVC, we should insist on heritage-style UPVC to, to fit in with the conservation area, which is what was agreed when we overturned the application. That's what we then insisted on, that we saw what they were, that the planning department-
Now, obviously, and after they've done it.
Yeah, so.
They get consented, don't they?
That is a recommendation that we'd like to see heritage UPVC. And I don't think we can insist on people putting wood in because of the whole energy crisis thing. We need to move quickly.
And where it, maybe this one.
Where it's located, yes, exactly. Aftering it's going to get from them.
And yes, it may not be appropriate for window, for, uh, actually.
Exactly.
If I could.
Heritage, heritage style UPVC then.
Could we say something, shall I, we, we, overall, generally, we, we approve the plan. Uh, we have some concerns about, uh, UPVC windows, but this could be overcome by using heritage type-
Yeah.
PVC windows. And they, you wouldn't notice unless you were an expert, I think.
Concerned about this disabled access to-
Yes, and the disabled access. We could add that in there, just clarification over the disability access.
Well, is there, is it disabled friendly going into the building?
There are steps.
Yeah.
If you go one way, I think.
Internally, it is crystal. Or externally?
If there's a disability.
Toilet, so in turn.
In turn.
If there's a disabled access problem, then it'd be building regulations, I guess.
Yeah.
Yes, we can still be on.
We can still point it out.
Sorry, councillor Austin?
I was, I was agreeing with you, Chair, that we should, we should point it out.
Yes.
Greater clarity over disability access.
But there was some, an objection about people sitting on the roof. I can't quite see where that would happen.
That's where the toilets are.
Lovely, yeah.
Got to sit down.
Maybe they're- Maybe their toilets with that one-way glass, so you can see out, but nobody can see in.
Should do it.
So what we're saying, um, we're saying we generally agree with the proposal, but would require heritage style.
I'd say we would require, or we would suggest-
Yes, recommend.
Heritage, uh, windows are used in UPVC or-
Yeah, heritage, heritage-type UPVC windows.
In the light of it being-
Okay, um, is that a proposal? Have we got a proposal then, then?
Councillor Wing, yeah.
Yeah.
Second, all those in favour?
Can you imagine the heating bill?
Could say, yeah.
I'm surprised they cover roof with solar panels.
Yeah, yeah, but I do.
Well, I would love to double glimpse it.
I mean.
Right, twenty-seven Wellington Crescent.
I called this in, Chair, uh, because I was concerned about the, um, this second-floor rear extension, following the removal of the existing, it says. I don't know what the existing looked like.
Yeah, it's quite odd, because there's a semi-circular bay at the back.
Ooh, look at that.
And then they're poking, but you reckon there's an extension there already?
It's what they're saying, it, but I don't know what the, um, that's the front, what's the rear elevation?
Uh, this is the only plan we have.
Yes, they haven't, they haven't elevated that rear revealing.
So they don't have a plan of an extension?
So.
No.
Yes, yes, second-floor rear extension?
Approved proposal and revised proposal. So something's already been approved according to this, and they've revised it. Um, I'm not entirely-
That's what the difference, yeah, I guess, no, yeah.
So is that current wall?
From, from what I can tell, I'll see from the front.
Ah.
I've seen it before.
Yeah, it's what the second difference is, yeah, I can-
You've got this block out, it's the new window, and all that's actually built out. And then they're looking to put the window back in, but to do that, they need-
Oh, they actually need to change the wall?
Oh, yeah, look.
Oh, I get it.
The rear, there's, there's no plan for that.
Okay.
But the front, they've had to curve the bedroom.
To get the window, the wall to get the window in.
Oh, no comment.
That, that no comment, that includes a front.
Yeah.
No comment, sorry.
No comment, yeah.
Yes, oh, um, that was weird. Are you proposing no comment?
Yes.
Seconding, all those in favour? And all those against, and abstaining. Councillor Wing, you didn't vote.
I, I, I agree. I agree with you.
You meant to vote. Okay. What's the planning?
Thank you, Chair.
Well done, you got it.
Well done, um-